Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's Own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios, where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Well, it's been an interesting week. We've seen the news. Poor Hunter, he's going after multiple years of investigations and the GOP looking into his affairs. He has pleaded guilty to two misdemeanor charges of not paying his taxes on time. Now, there was another gun charge where he didn't quite tell the truth when he was applying for his gun permit. But I thought that this was like a whole Godfather syndicate, the way the GOP were talking. But it turns out, yeah, just a couple of misdemeanor charges. I mean, that's a lot of, lot of energy and time to put in for misdemeanor charges on not paying your taxes on time. Not that he didn't pay his taxes, okay? But not that he didn't pay them on time. But let's talk about some real nonsense happening right here in the state of Indiana. I'm not sure if every one of my listeners understands or knows who Moms for Liberty is, but WFYI reports, "An Indiana chapter of the national group Moms for Liberty is facing backlash after releasing a newsletter featuring a quote from Adolf Hitler. The Indiana Democratic Party and local politicians have denounced the group's use of the quote." Now, they are a conservative group. This group that has been at the forefront of the conservative movement, targeting books that reference race, gender, identity, and electing right wing candidates to local school boards nationwide, is hosting one of the next major gatherings for the Republican presidential primary contenders. But the Hamilton County chapter introduced their newsletter, "The Parents Brigade," this week. And on the front page, there was a quote attributed to the aforementioned fascist, right? So now, I'm gonna say this. Apparently, they didn't think the quote was bad because they actually gave credit to where the quote came from. So it's not like they didn't know that it came from Adolf Hitler. But maybe if they would stop targeting books, they would know that Adolf Hitler was really, really a bad dude. But, you know, books, meh, we don't want those. After the newsletter became public, the chapter added context beneath the quote, said, "Its purpose was to notify parents about the dangers of government overreach." The quote itself comes from the 1935 speech. I'm not gonna go into that. But, but isn't government overreach saying what you can't do for your children? Like, you know, trying to ban gender-affirming care? I don't understand how you could be down for some people's parental rights, but not other people's parental rights. And we can thank the judge last week for saying, nah, y'all not finna do that. You're violating all kind of constitutional rights with that bill. But of course, the chapter came out and said that they condemn Adolf Hitler. But honestly, ya messed up. Senator J.D. Ford said, "Six million Jewish people lost their lives because of the rhetoric and ideals that were pushed by Hitler. We fought a global war. Thousands of American service members lost their lives to extinguish this type of hateful, antisemitic language and views promoted by that clown." Councilman Miles Nelson, who is also running for mayor of Carmel, said, "As a man of devout Jewish faith and a parent concerned about our kids' education, this hate speech has no place in our community. I'm hopeful my opponent will condemn the organizations using this inflammatory rhetoric of the former Nazi leader." And as of like an hour or so ago, apparently, his opponent hasn't said anything. But guys, this is real. We've got a lot of folks out here feeling emboldened to just bring their hate to the front, just feeling all kind of like diesel strong, that I can just be as hateful as I want. And they're trying to manipulate words to suggest what they are actually doing, which are banning books that talk about black people, banning books that talk about gay people, banning trans people. You're trying to ban the writings and the literature of people who actually exist. Honeys, over at Moms for Liberty, that's what Hitler did. And you guys are in the process of doing it now. I know you can't see it because, again, you don't wanna read all the books. Okay, okay. But it doesn't just stop there. WishTV.com reports, "The Chesterton Municipal Complex sign was defaced this week with anti-LGBTQ+ graffiti, according to the Chesterton Police Department. Just after 6:30 a.m. on Tuesday, an officer was sent to the complex on reports of vandalism. Upon arrival, the officer spoke to the Assistant Street Commissioner, who noticed the sign as he came into work." Police have not made any arrests. And in the, and of course, Senator Rodney Poe, who is from Chesterton, says, "The people of Chesterton should be livid that a coward decided to vandalize town property with a call to violence and derogatory language. I denounce this senseless and shameful act. As a legislator and public servant, my priority is to ensure the safety and well-being of all people in my community, and this inflammatory ignorant message absolutely cannot go unanswered." LGBTQ+ people are our family, friends, and neighbors, and they undoubtedly deserve to live safely and happily in our shared community, just as anyone else. See, this is what happens when you give people liberties. This is what happens. You let people think it's okay to be misogynist. You let people think it's okay to be racist. You let people think it's okay to be homophobic, or antisemitic, or anti-Muslim. We have to stop the hate. And trying to legislate that hate is what our state house has been doing, and what state houses around the nation are doing. They're literally trying to legislate away our existence, our history, our art, our literature. Because why? You just don't, what? What did we do to you? What, what did, what did we do to you? That's the question that everybody should be asking, right? But this is what hate does. It brings out all the, it brings out all the terrible aspects of humanity. But since I started with so much negativity, y'all know it was Juneteenth this week, and I got a message from our Vice President of the United States.
And happy Juneteenth. So tonight, with joy, we gather with friends and family to celebrate America's newest So when I served in the United States Senate, I was proud to co-sponsor a bill to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. And as Vice President, it was my honor to stand beside our President, Joe Biden, as he signed the legislation that finally made that dream a reality. Today, Americans from all walks of life come together to celebrate Juneteenth, to honor black excellence, culture, and community, to remember our nation's full history, and to celebrate one of our founding principles, the principle of freedom. America is a promise, a promise of freedom, liberty, and justice. The story of Juneteenth, as we celebrate it, is the story of our ongoing fight to realize America's promise, not for some, but for all. So as we gather tonight, let us remember the words of the great Coretta Scott King. "The fight for civil rights must be fought and won with each generation." She reminds us that our freedoms will not be permanent unless we, in each generation, are vigilant to protect them. So let us all stand together as Americans to teach and honor our history, to protect our liberty, and to continue the fight for freedom. Thank you. May God bless you, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you. Thank you. And now, it is my honor-
See, that's what Moms Demand Liberty should be talking about. Let's come together and continue to fight for justice for all and liberty for all. But they don't have that. So I would like to thank our Vice President. She is a reflection of what we can be if we put our backs into it. So y'all, roll up your sleeves and let's get to work. But you know what time it is? It is time for me to give a shout out to my sponsor, Bohm's Unique Boutique. Today's show is brought to you by Bohm's Unique Boutique. Click on the QR code. And for all Turn Left listeners, you can get a 10% discount on your order by using the code DEMOCRAT. Be sure to visit www.bohm'suniqueboutique.com. And as always, you know, Black Pearl Studios has all the tools that you need to create a campaign, 30, 60, 90 second commercial for your social media. No, I don't have drones, but I have everything you need. So reach out to me, and my costs are very, very low, because I want you guys to use your money to, to touch people and get out. I just need a little bit of, you know, time. But I promise you, you will not find anyone that has more reasonable pricing than, than I do at Black Pearl IT Solutions and Black Pearl Studios. All right, I'm so excited, guys. I'm bringing back for a second time. I love this young lady. She inspired, she inspires me because she never lets anything get her down. She never lets anything stop her from doing what she does. She won her election in 2019. I had a chance to interview her. She drove up from Columbus, and we made sure that we could get her in the place, and she was comfortable. And now she's running for reelection, and I'm really excited to chat with her today to talk about what's going on in Columbus, Indiana, and how we can finish what we started. Y'all, welcome to the show, Columbus City Councilor-at-large Grace Kessler. Grace, welcome to the show.
Hey, Dana, thank you so much for having me. I'm excited to be here tonight.
I'm excited to have you back because you were, you were very inspiring four years ago when you ran for office. What was it like that first run? And what did you do the night that you won your election?
Oh, man. So one thing, it's so crazy to think about. It's been nearly four years, or it has been four years since the last election and campaign year. And we've all been through a lot this past four years with COVID and just life and politics and everything. And it's, it seems like it's been a long four years, but also the blink of an eye. And, you know, I loved running for office the first time around because I grew up in Columbus. My parents are from here. I lived here basically my whole life, and it felt like it was an opportunity to give back in a different way than I had ever given back. It also forced me to learn a lot, just because I maybe knew a lot of what was happening in the community. Understanding local politics is totally different.
Oh, yeah.
You might like your street being paved and your trash being picked up, but I don't think most of us understand the logistics behind that.
Absolutely. It's a whole, it's a whole thing.
Absolutely, yes. And it's been really enlightening and educational during that run for office and then the past four years, just getting to really understand how the city ticks and how things work. And so it was an amazing evening last time around, when we won in Columbus, Indiana. We, the Democrats took control of the council for the first time in like 35, 40 years.
That was amazing. I mean, the, the best part of that whole night was saying, "Mike Pence is Columbus's Democrat now." That was the best part of the whole night, like, oh, we were rubbing it in.
It was really kind of comical that I had friends, you know, from all over the country sending me articles like, "What just happened in Columbus, Indiana?", because we were all over the news due to that, you know, that exciting flashpoint. And so it was a fun way to, I guess, hit the, hit the newsstands. But we were really excited, so we've got, you know, a seven-member council, and four of those members are Democrats, and all of them are running again this time around.
That's great. That is, that, that is music to my ears right there, because we gotta hold on to seats. So you know what? Talk about what's been going on in Columbus. What has your first term been like as counselor?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, it's been a weird couple four years, and partly because of COVID. Three months after council, my term started, COVID happened, and we moved everything virtual. And it was a little disheartening, I'll be honest, because I had come off of an amazing campaign year of networking and getting to know community members and really engaging and to nothing for, you know, months and months. And so learning things virtually is possible, as we all know. But it was tricky to really feel that you were, you know, those conversations that happen, you know, when you run into people before council meetings or outside of council meetings, or just downtown Columbus. We weren't able to have those and hear, you know, people's concerns. And so we had to be creative about making sure that I was really available on the socials and, you know, educating people as well about what was happening on council meetings and things like that, because there wasn't that in-person aspect of just popping in if you wanna learn.
Right.
But it, it, you know, it really, it taught us a lot, I think, about how we work and as a community. And thankfully, we are back to somewhat normal as far as that, you know, meeting in person. And in some ways, it actually, I think some great things came out of COVID in the sense that it allows some flexibility for council members to be engaged. If, for example, they're traveling for work or something like this, they still can call in and participate in a meeting, which they weren't able to do before.
Oh, that's, that's great.
So it really, yeah, really make sure our council members are engaged all the time, I guess. And because we all have jobs outside of the council as well, not a full-time job. But one of the most exciting things I, we passed during the last four years, we are moving to a Class II city.
Now, what does that mean?
So we are currently a Class III city. There are three classes of cities in Indiana. I had to learn all about this. I had no idea.
Right.
And Indianapolis is the only Class I. So there's a kind of level setting. And it's really based on population size. So it triggers not a mandatory change, but once you reach your certain size of population in your community, it triggers a couple more things that I would say allow for better communication and financial stability.
Okay.
And sustainability. And so the biggest changes, we moved from a seven council member to a nine council.
Oh, cool. So y'all could get two more Democrats.
Exactly. So we have a whole slate, almost a whole slate, I think. I think we're maybe one too short, but we've got three at-large candidates, and I think four of the six districts, now that I'm thinking about it, are running for Democratic seats in very winnable seats.
Oh, I love hearing that.
Yep, we had to redistrict with the change to a Class II city, but we did that as an entire council, actually, Republican and Democrat. And we looked at just, you know, the population and the makeup, and we didn't do anything too wonky. But the perk of it is, although we live in a pretty red state and a pretty red county, Columbus can be pretty blip.
Oh, yeah.
And people tend to really vote more for the person rather than just follow party lines when it comes to our community elections. And so I love that, and I, I, I think that's great because it's all about people who are willing to get out there and do, you know, do the job and have good values. And hopefully, they're, you know, we love Democrats, but we've got, you know, good people who are excited to get engaged in politics. And so, so, okay, so what did I say? The nine, the nine council member, that's the new thing. We also moved from a clerk treasurer to just a clerk, and our city hires a controller, which might not sound like a big deal, but when you're dealing with an $85 million budget, you know, it's probably a good idea to have a controller that has a CPA.
Maybe, maybe. It might be helpful so somebody ain't doing something nefarious with the money.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So we've got a great for treasurer now, but you know what? That position's elected. And so we wanted to make sure that there was financial responsibility by making this move and making sure that taxpayers felt like their money, at the end of the day, yeah, wasn't at risk for who knows what.
And that's pretty exciting, because I think I met the young lady that's running for clerk in Columbus.
Yep, we've got someone running for clerk as well, Esha Jackson.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, hey, guys, before we go any further, listen, I wanna make sure that you guys know that my goal is to always elect as many Democrats as I possibly can. And every show, we turn into a fundraiser. So if you are liking anything that Ms. the Counselor Kessler is saying, please click on her @BlueDonate link and donate to her campaign, because every dollar counts. We wanna hang on to Columbus as a majority on that city council. So y'all, donate to her campaign. All right, what else has been happening in Columbus?
Well, lots of big flashy things, as they say, within the community. I'd say some of our hot, hot topics, we're building a, a indoor sports complex in Columbus. Not really a political divider, but there's been a lot of tough conversations about how we spend funds such as tip dollars and how we responsibly spend taxpayer money. I'll be honest, I've been a little surprised about how spend, 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 our Republican administration.
Wait, 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 you mean to tell me the, the party of fiscal responsibility is a, is a spend, spend, and wait, reduce tax and spend, right? So there ain't no money after a while? Okay, all right, make it make sense, make it make sense.
It's something like that, all in the name of, which, economic development, which I, I get that, and I think there's definitely gonna be some economic growth in having this sports complex that brings tournaments and things like that. But it's a lot of money. And I just have, as a counselor, some on my voting record, recently, while I voted initially to approve the bond for this, some of the stuff that has come up, it's the game of, let's find money wherever we can find it. To finish the project.
Yeah.
And I, and I can see where they're coming from, but we've got, you know, we've got people who really need support. And sometimes the decision has to be, you know what? We can't do this right now. This money needs to be prioritized for something else.
Well, has there been any conversation about a private, a public-private partnership? I mean, goodness gracious, Columbus wouldn't be Columbus without Cummings. And so is there an opportunity to maybe do something with them?
Well, Columbus is very engaged in the sense of, you know, being an amazing employer in the community. And so I think we're, as a city, still actively trying to make sure, and, you know, that we're engaging them as a public-private partner. I think there's still work to be done there.
Okay. Well, I mean, I mean, I can't imagine them not wanting their name on the complex. Come on now, come on.
Well, actually, it's the Circle K Fieldhouse.
Oh, come on, Circle K? They came through.
They did, yeah. There's a lot of business sponsors, and, you know, I mean, I think the project is, is, is good, and it'll be a benefit for everyone. But I, I've always viewed my role on council as, you know, that project might be great, but I have to look at it at a holistic view. What's happening over here in, you know, Department of Public Works? What's happening over here in utilities? What's happening in planning, where they have needs as well?
Yeah.
And how are we managing all those needs? And what's an absolute priority versus that would be nice to have?
Right, right. I, I get that, because that's, you know, when you talked about what people need, every community has folks that are, you know, not financially stable, or unhoused, or have medical issues. And balancing out those community development things with the needs of the human is valuable. And I'm glad that you mentioned that. Why is that so important to you? I mean, I know why, but just explain it to the people.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Dana, I think the role of government is to help all community members who, to, to lead a, you know, successful life, and however that looks like. So maybe it's making sure that people have high-quality standards of living, making sure people have food on the table, making sure people have childcare. I think there is a role for government to play in those fields in making sure that people can, you know, survive and live in a day-to-day thing. It's not, it can't just be up to nonprofits and churches.
Well, I agree. I agree.
And I work for nonprofits.
And see, I would pay a little bit more in taxes to make sure no child was hungry, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so I've kind of viewed it as, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that our community has housing for every income level. And we can't just continue to put subsidies only or primarily at higher-income housing and just expect, you know, nonprofits or whatever, you know, create those more lower-income or affordable housing. We, we have to make a scene, and we have to have expectations out of our developers to make sure that if we're giving city and government subsidy to a developer, especially for housing, that they are in some way meeting the need of a variety of incomes.
Absolutely, because I think, I think people get it twisted when we talk about affordable housing. We, we, they hear the word or hear the term affordable housing, they only think it's low-income housing or assisted, government assistance. But that's not it. You could be making, you know, $50,000, $60,000 a year as a family of four or whatever. That's not poverty, but it doesn't mean you can go out and buy a $300,000 home either.
No, or like afford to rent. I mean, that's the thing. It's like, Jada doesn't lie, and I have been doing a lot of data research. You know, it's, it's, it's fascinating when you start to look in and you're like, oh, like 35% of Columbus qualifies for HUD housing vouchers.
Oh, wow, 35%?
Yeah, just about 35% qualifies for HUD or Columbus Housing Program. So you have to make under $45,000 to qualify for those, one or the other.
Wow.
So, and we think all $45,000, that's, that's okay, that's a decent income, but no, not in today's world when rents are a minimum of $1,500 in some places. It's, it's, there's a lot of mismatch. And of course, there's a lot of moving pieces that affect all these things. But I think, you know, we have to really, yeah, focus on some of those numbers, you know, some of those numbers, and ensuring that we are providing resources, of course, you know, for amenities for everyone in our community. But if those who are at the lowest of the income along the spectrum are not thriving, the rest of ours aren't thriving as a community.
So Grace, I know you just said that you're a big numbers lady. I wanna ask you this question. What, do you know the demographic makeup of your city?
Um, roughly, so about, I can give it to you in-
Just give me whole round numbers. I mean, I-
Yeah, school, school districts are the way to go, kind of. So about 13% to 15% of our students in our school district are Latino, Hispanic background.
Wow.
And are Black, African-American background, I think is about 3% to 5%. So a little smaller. And then we have pretty large, I don't have exact numbers on it, a pretty large Indian population and Asian population as well.
Okay.
Because, again, comments, so a lot of people are moving here, good for Cummins, but then some people are moving here because they know, at the end of the day, we're a pretty diverse and welcoming community.
Well, the reason why I asked the question was very specific, because, you know, there are people out there, when they hear, oh, we gotta build affordable housing, they are always thinking that it's only brown and black folks that they gotta build this affordable housing for. And the fact that you have a significant, that the population of black folks is three to five, and Latinos 13 to 15, so roughly only 20% of the city are black and brown. But you said 35% of the city needs assistance. It's, it's, it's everybody. It's, it's, and we've gotta be, that's what the Vice President was talking about. It's gotta be all of us working together. And so I just wanted to ask those questions, just so people can get a picture. This, this ain't a majority-minority city, you know? So let's, and we want, we want to help everyone. I'm sorry, I had to just throw that in there.
No, you're absolutely right, Dana. I think, yeah, you make a really great point. This is people of all backgrounds, all, oh, man. This is people of all backgrounds. Oh, oh, man, it's, it's just, I mean, times are tough right now. And so, and I think because that we're seeing more people struggling finding that affordable housing. So it's, it's definitely a balance, balancing act. But we've, we've got to step up as a city and, you know, figure out what is our, how are we addressing things such as homelessness, rather than just kind of pushing it along or moving people along? Because absolutely, there's people in our community who think we should be like fining homeless or.
I'm sorry, what? Did you, did you say?
Filing homeless.
So they're making it illegal to be unhoused? They want to make it illegal with, with repercussions for being unhoused? This ain't, this isn't your opponent, is it? Please don't tell me it's your opponent. Because I would be rallying right now. I'd be doing some rage donating right now.
There, yeah, there's some, there, there's conversations, you know, these are all, these are all just conversations that happen in our community where we're, where it might, and I know this happens in other communities, where if you're camping somewhere where you're not supposed to be camping, they're going to say, well, you got to move or you got to pay this fine. I'm like, what good is that for anyone?
But if they're unhoused, how they gonna pay the fine? And then when they don't pay the fine, then what happens?
Good question, Dana. Good question. The city spends money on litigation.
Uh, see, sounds like the State House.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're, I think, you know, you know, I think we can see this all across the country, the state. And we're in the business of sometimes putting Band-Aids on stuff. And I know these aren't simple problems. They're tough. They're tough. If they were simple, we'd, someone would have figured it out.
Yeah, we made it to the moon. We can solve some of these problems, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. But I know there, there, there's always just a little bit of a different way to view it. And so my whole, you know, lately, probably in the past six months to a year, I finally felt like, all right, I got this groove and I felt more comfortable with like saying no.
Okay.
Or, you know, asking those tough questions and bringing stuff up in public meetings that some people might not want you to talk about in a public meeting. But at the end of the day, these are taxpayer dollars. We're, they, they need to know, how is the money being spent? What's the plan? Who's making those decisions on the board and same commission? Do those people have lived experience in our community of diversity and backgrounds of varying economic status? The, the, we need to make sure they do.
Well, are, are you saying that you, you encourage transparency on your council? Is, is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, yes.
I think it's, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's, I'm going to be honest. I mean, this past couple of years, yeah, I'm a city councillor, but it's tough sometimes to even just have transparency between, you know, the mayor and their staff and the city council. And I think a lot of other city councils experience that. City council members across the state experience that. And we're not here to micromanage. We've got amazing department heads in Columbus and even great administration in us. But it's opening up more transparency. So because we're, we're supposed to be the voice of the people.
Absolutely.
You know, if I don't know what's going on or my other councillor, councillors, it's tough to make a decision. And so try not to get stuck in the middle of that.
I can dig it. So what other kind of great things have you guys been able, those Democrats in the majority down in Columbus been able to get done?
Yeah, well, we just passed a, I don't know how big it is, but it's kind of exciting because it's around environment and sustainability. We're working in a partnership with, it's called, oh, I'm going to get the name wrong, Project Forty-Six, I think. It's in partnership with Bloomington and Brown County and a couple of other communities along State Road Forty-Six about really taking a strong look and assessing our environmental impact.
I love that. And see, the young folks are going to really love that because they want to know that they're going to have a planet to live on in twenty years.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm excited that that finally, it's kind of been talked about. But, you know, putting an ordinance around that really forces us to think about it. And then again, it forces us to think, all right, we're going to give a subsidy to this developer? What are they doing as far as the environmental impact?
I love it.
You know, how are, how are their buildings working? How are, you know, are they LEED certified? Or those are some of the tough conversations. And I think some things I hope that we start to see here in, in the future as we start to think a little more about environmental sustainability. And especially, you know, it's, it's, I, we hear constantly, oh, it's expensive, it's expensive, you know, to build solar panels or do these things that are to do an inventory or do things like that. And it's like, well, it might be upfront, but the benefit of long-term.
Exactly. Exactly. The short sightedness of, you know, okay, you said that it, right now you have a seven-member council, uh, four Democrats, three Republicans. That's a very, very slim majority. A lot of the ordinances that you've had to, you guys have gotten past, and I'm hearing the success that you're having, means that you've had to work across the aisle. Talk about, talk about your style and communicating with people you may have policy differences with, but, but, but find commonality in improving your city.
Absolutely. Because I do think I tell people all the time, I say, yes, I'm a Democrat. And yes, we have Republicans on, on the council, but even the Democrats agree sometime, disagree. Even the Republicans disagree sometimes because at least right now, everyone who's on council understands that we are working for our community members. And I felt that because right now we have this pretty common feeling about how we can give back to the community, I have, I have had an opportunity to have, have really great conversations with people across the aisle. Because I always bring it back to how are we being responsible with our tax dollars? But also I, if it's data-driven, I try to bring it back to data. Because so many decisions unfortunately get made because people feel, feel strongly about something.
Emotion. I had somebody tell me once, I had somebody tell me once, you can't emote and think at the same time. I don't know how true that is.
Uh, and it's, I mean, sure, emotions are absolutely important. We've got to have a heart and a passion for engaging with our community. And I, I'd like to believe that all of our councillors right, right now do. But data is also important too.
Absolutely.
And if we're seeing, you know, this in one department versus this in one department, we have to address the needs of the one that's hurting more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pieces of the community. And so it's taken me, I'm not going to lie, it's taken me a little bit to feel comfortable. I knew a couple of council members before I joined council, but some of them I didn't. I'm a little bit younger than a good chunk of the council members. And so there's been a little bit, been a little bit of building up to, you know, feeling, yeah, learning just how to navigate that. And so, absolutely, I've cherished that learning, but still navigating those waters.
I think, but I think that's wonderful. I mean, again, I mean, I, I don't anticipate everyone agreeing with me. In fact, if, if, if everyone, I, my philosophy has always been if everybody agrees with me, something's wrong with me. That means I'm just blowing in the wind and just saying whatever to make people feel good. So I think that's great. And I think also healthy debates, because somebody may bring up something that you just haven't thought about. You can't think about everything. And someone else's perspective can be very helpful in making a sound decision. So I'm really excited to hear that. So even as we work to hold on to, to Columbus, I love that, okay, we're taking in everybody's, and, and municipal governance is very different from, from the state governance, obviously. Because at the municipal level, you see how, you can see every day how your ordinances impact lives. Does that play a huge role in your decision-making when you're in chambers?
So, because it's not, I, I think you're right. Because even if it's just a zoning thing, you are interacting potentially with every single person who's affected by that zoning thing in a meeting versus someone you may have never met. You hear their stories firsthand. You hear, and again, you might not always agree and it might just be a tough decision on some of these things. On, you know, which way you go, one way or the other. But it's really impactful to see, to hear how, you know, those decisions affect everyday lives. And so that's a thing that's tough to manage as well because, like you said, we don't all agree. And it's tough to sometimes swallow that I'm going to make a decision and someone's not going to like it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I do that. I do that every day. I know I'm going to piss somebody off with something I said. Oh, well.
Exactly. Exactly. I'm going to vote one way because I feel like I believe that way or I feel like that's the, you know, the best decision for the greater of the community. Where I've had way more people tell me they, you know, they want me to vote that way. But it's always going to, yeah, it's always going to upset one person, one way or the other.
I love it. So, okay, let's look forward. I mean, you, you know, you, you had it, you had four years to learn. You were, you were a part of some amazing, some amazing changes in your city. Now you're running for reelection. As you move, as you look forward to the, to the city of Columbus, what are some key areas that you want to address in your second term?
Yeah, some are the same. If anything, I've learned a little bit about what you can and what you cannot impact as a city councillor. I hear everyone and I'm always open for a conversation, but we can't do everything.
No, no. You mean, you can't, you know, determine the, the speed, the speed limit on the interstate highway? You, you, you can't do that?
Can't. If you, yeah, can't do that. I can't prevent someone from parking in, in front of your house on a public street.
You can't?
You know, can't, can't do it all. But my, I'd say my biggest focus moving forward are a couple of things. One, I've already talked about a little bit, but it's housing. And I really want to take a close look, and we've already started to do this. I sit on the redevelopment commission as the city council liaison. And so you talked about transparency and you talked about having conversations and having debates. Unfortunately, too often we see stuff come to city council that is basically decided. There was no conversation. And sometimes I'll see something for the first time on the first reading and it's asking us to appropriate millions of dollars.
What?
And so my big thing is pushing has been on redevelopment. I've started to, to stress the importance of having some of these conversations about whatever type of development it is in a public forum before we get nine months down the road.
I, I agree.
Yeah, just because it's so important. Again, it's not micromanaging, it's just keeping the public informed. And it's keeping more than just a small group of people, you know, making those decisions. And so specifically, one of the focuses is on housing. I really like us to, we are actually in the works and I'm hoping it's, and I'm moving, it's moving along, I guess. Housing, a housing study. We haven't done a housing study in twelve years. And that is crucial to address really what we need as far as housing. Again, I'll go back to the emotion part of people, you know, they'll vote for something because they're like, well, we need housing at all income levels. And I'm like, show me the data.
Right. Well, let me ask you this though. It is, okay, I know that Columbus is growing and I, I think your city is a little different than some of our other Class Two cities in that your, your population is growing, whereas there's over fifty counties that are losing population. Are you seeing a situation where the builders are just not interested in, in, in improving the, the quantity of housing? Because how did we get in this crisis? If Indiana is losing population, why are we in such a crisis with housing when people are leaving the state? And that, those numbers are real. And then, and then Indianapolis and central Indiana is growing, but we're, we're growing with people from other parts of the state. So I just can't figure this part out.
That's a good question.
You got nothing too, huh?
I, I think we, you know, we have a good amount of developer interest. They always want some sort of subsidy.
They just don't want to pay for the work. Okay.
You'll see in other communities as well. I mean, it is expensive to build right now. It's absurdly expensive. So I get that. I think some of it is there's availability, but it's not affordable.
Okay.
So then it's a struggle of, well, where do I live? We also in Columbus really, this is a bit of a city issue, it's a various area of issue. But we struggle with transitional housing. We don't really have a lot in between the homeless shelter and.
Gotcha.
Find yourself an apartment.
Right, right.
We have a couple, a number of sober living homes, but obviously you qualify for those and there are a number of stipulations around those. We don't have, we don't have near good enough stock of subsidized housing or just even longer-term housing for someone who might be trying to, you know, find a job and hold a job and get their way out of being houseless. So.
Yeah. And that's, and that's scary.
The tough thing. And yeah, a lot of communities I think are, are like that as well. Because you, you know, someone calls me even at work, I work with people with intellectual developmental disabilities in their family, and we've got people who are looking for somewhere to live. And they're on the brink of, you know, maybe not having anywhere to live. And it's always like, uh, you can go to the homeless shelter, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Tough, it's a tough situation that I think we've got to look really close at to figure out what's that step in between, you know, just a nightly shelter and somehow, well, getting off the waitlist for one, for subsidized housing.
So talk about your transportation, your infrastructure and transportation needs down there. If you're growing, public transportation is going to be something that you need to consider. I, I think there needs to be some kind of public transportation between Columbus and Indianapolis, especially.
That would be nice.
Especially the airport. I know, I know the former party chair down there talked about that. Talk about what you're seeing from your perspective when it comes to infrastructure and, and more importantly, transportation.
Yeah. So I am very proud of Columbus in the sense that we've got a great bus system.
Oh, cool.
For the community of our size, we have beautiful accessible buses. There are some setbacks which we are actively addressing right now.
Okay.
Whether it be making sure bus stops are fully accessible, making sure bus stops are, you know, in the right spot. I guess as far as locations, they go to, they run the right amount of time. We don't have any bus service. Don't think we have any bus service on Sunday.
Okay.
So.
Everybody stay home and rest.
Yeah, got to rest. No third chip bus service or anything like that. And so, or door-to-door, we have a little bit of a door-to-door transit within the service, but it's just overwhelmed. And so there's a few, I just actually saw a bus drive by right now, right in front of my house. There's a few hiccups, but the, the passion in the infrastructure is there. And I will say the city is very focused on ensuring that we can, you know, making that a priority. Especially, yeah, for people who are unable to drive or for whatever reason.
Don't want to drive, like these young folks don't.
Drive. Exactly. Don't want to drive, unable, whatever that reason may be. So how, I, I think, you know, you look to cities with great public transportation everywhere. It just creates a, in my mind, a better quality of life and just a better community sense. So that's good. We're doing some amazing work, I think, around our bike and pedestrian plan. We just approved, it was, I think, last fall, it might have been this spring.
Time is flying, right?
It was a brand new bike and pedestrian plan that our planning department and parks department has done an amazing job on, on really mapping out how do we make sure we get awesome bike trails, bike paths on the street. We've got an amazing people trail. Some, honestly, again, for the size of the community we are, the amount of bike, bike lanes we have is incredible. But there's a lot of focus from our planning department on making sure that our community is bikeable, walkable, rollable, however you choose, no matter what part of town, whether you live in this subdivision out here or you live right downtown, that those distances don't limit, you know, that walkability, rideability.
I love it.
I'm excited about that.
So let's stay with infrastructure real quick. I know last, last session, not this, the 2022 legislative session, they passed some, some money to take care of lead pipes and some of the infrastructure things that would just need repair in Indiana. Is that something that? Um, i- is that something that you guys, uh, once you receive the funds, you guys are the fiduciary responsibility folk on the council, right? You guys take care of the money, allocate the money. Have you guys?
We would appropriate that. I have not seen an appropriation yet.
Okay.
Um, unless it's under a certain amount of funds. Um, I will say, that has also been a focus of, huh, we've got some old, um, sewer pipe systems in a lot of our huge downtown blocks, where utilities and planning and engineering have been working tirelessly on updating those the past year and a half. Um, and so, some amazing improvements there. Um, yeah, we should talk about stormwater, that's a whole other issue.
Yes, honey. I think, I think every council person kinda just goes, no, not stormwater. But it's so, it's so important, right?
It is. You know, I didn't even, you know, you never think about it until you're like, I mean, we had, Columbus had a massive flood in two thousand and eight, a hundred-year flood. And some of those concerns were addressed, uh, but the stormwater system was part of this concern.
Mm-hmm.
Also, we're kind of an island surrounded by a river.
Right, right.
But it's constantly, it's, it's bringing it up constantly. Um, we get a heavy rain, and like, my street down the street, like floods. Um, and so, we've, there's gonna be some tough conversations. You know, other communities have a, what are they called? Uh, it's basically a tax on the square footage of your roof.
Hmm.
Um, storm, I think it's called a stormwater tax, um, especially, you know, if you're a massive, let's call it Walmart.
Right.
You got a big roof.
Right.
Well, you don't have as much, uh, what do you call it, pervious? Is that the where, uh, where the water can go?
Right, right, right. We got you.
Uh, what are these fancy words? Um, so, you know, I know that's tough, but if you're, you know, if you've got these big buildings like this, and you don't have anywhere for the water to go, and it's affecting your stormwater system, um, you gotta do something.
Well, yeah. And then if you get flooded out, just think about how much you're gonna lose in merchandise, Mr. Walmart. I mean, that's lost.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that's always in the conversation around budget time. What are we doing about stormwater? What are we doing about storm? And there's things happening, but there's still things to be done.
Okay. I'm gonna switch gears real quick to, to education. And I, I know that you guys don't directly deal with education, but I did wanna ask you, so la- last year, or, well, if you remember, the state passed the dollar law that said if your school district closes down the school, the public school building, then this public school corporation has to then sell that property to a charter school for a dollar. They ran into a roadblock up in Hamilton County, you know, the one percenters, where they closed down a school, and they were like, no, you're not coming up in Hamilton County with this nonsense, get away. And so, uh, the legislators started to revisit, oh, maybe the dollar law is not a great idea when it's not just lower-income communities. Are y'all seeing any of, of that in Columbus, the charter school voucher thing?
Uh, ha, a little bit. We had a very contested school board race last fall, very contested. And, um, it was kinda split vote kinda situation. Some, some new people who think quite differently, maybe than we do, joined. Um, and then some great people also joined. I, I, I think we see that a little bit, but this specifics you're referring to, not as much.
Good, good.
Um, definitely not as much. I mean, and yeah, we don't, we obviously focus on that as much on council, but I do, I am excited, you know, we, in the name of economic development and making sure that people are educated, um, and can get the education they need, uh, redevelopment, um, funds, and I think it's a million dollars, or a, a, a chunk of funds to a program that focuses on high school graduation rates and transitional planning for students with disabilities.
I love that. I love all of that.
Yep. So job, uh, job readiness, that's so important. Um, and if we can play a role in that as a city, um, whether it's, you know, through tip dollars and redevelopment dollars, or whether it's, I don't know, maybe finding a way to subsidize some childcare.
Um, would that help some people out? Oh, my God.
All those little pieces really impact, um, like, you know, our community altogether in creating a, you know, an educated, um, youth.
Yeah, because we see a lot of people that don't want our kids to read everything. I mean, the, I thi- see, what kills me is that they act like children are so sensitive that they can't handle the truth, like the line from A Few Good Men, you can't handle the truth. But the reality is, if you give them all the information and then let them make up their own minds. I, I often wonder, and this is on me, this ain't on you, I often wonder if giving them all the information and making, and allowing them to make up their own mind, do these folks fear that they won't align with the nonsense they talking about? And, and, and so you're restricting, I mean, we are, when Eli Lilly says, we're not expanding in Indiana because y'all don't have the workforce that we need. In fact, we have to change the work that we do in Indiana to fit the workforce. That's a hit and a half that we are not doing a good job of making sure that we have an educated populace. I mean.
It's sad, Dana. And I were, you mentioned Cummins, like, Cummins is a very, you know, they were, um, they're right there at the state house lobbying for, um, um, what were they lobbying for? Riffra, you know, these same-sex marriage back in the early.
Yeah, yeah.
All of these, um, because they're like, this is a benefit. They were lobbying for benefits for, um, domestic partnerships. They were lobbying for, like, these are benefits for these companies because they know they can attract the most qualified individuals.
Absolutely.
And I worry sometimes, um, because, um, the city doesn't always align up to some of, um, you know, companies like that, and what they're looking for. And they want that diversity and thought and background, whatever it may be, um, because it really adds val- it adds value to their business.
And I never understood that. Why wouldn't you, wh- why would you put policies in place that tell some of the smartest people in our country, do not move here, you will be treated poorly? I'm sorry, a city, Indiana, a state that works for less. I'm just saying.
You're absolutely right. Yeah. Why disincentivize people to wanna move here? Which is funny, because then we're building field houses and amenities to get people to move here.
Right, right, but we don't, we don't wanna.
Yeah, we've got other policies that are, that, yeah.
Discriminatory. Yeah, discriminatory and limit people's range of what they can be. And I think that's the thing, I think you and I are so in alignment with, I see that you are people first. Like, yes, you understand data. Yes, you understand the fiscal responsibility of being, you know, making sure that we have enough money to do all the things. But I feel like you are about people first. Tell me, before we go to tonight, tell me where that, that love of humanity comes from.
Oh, it's not hard to answer. So I grew up in a very unique situation. I grew up here in Columbus. Um, my grandparents were farmers on a hundred-and-seventy-five-year-old homestead now. Uh, my other set of grandparents grew up here as well, and were hard workers. My mom was the executive director of the homeless shelter for twenty-five years.
Okay, okay.
So, and my dad, um, actually worked at Cummins.
Okay.
And, and so I got to see, and Cummins also gives back tremendous amounts of money to our community.
That's great.
For all types of social programs, whether it be employee time or money.
I love it.
And so I saw that through, um, you know, my dad told me, and then I literally grew up working and interacting and, um, engaging with people. I was volunteering at the food bank, you know, when I was probably ten years old, and understanding that, um, it, it's our job to, um, you know, to help and support individuals and do what we can as a community, and bring one another along with each other. And, um, I think that, you know, my mom constantly told me when we were younger, my, my siblings and I, when we were younger, that, you know, it's, it's, we're, we are, I guess, uh, you know, blessed in that sense to have what we need, and what can we do to make sure that our fellow brothers and sisters and those beside us, um, can be supported as well? And whether that's our time, or our talents, or whatever that looks like. But, um, you know, it's not, I, it's fine line with me, it's not charity.
No.
I want people to feel that they have the tools to be empowered to, um, to actually reach those goals that they have for themselves. And if housing is absurdly priced or something like that, then it's hard for the, for individuals to, to, you know, to get there.
I love it.
And what are we doing, you know, it's all about equity.
Yeah.
What, what are we doing to make sure that people, um, we might not all start out at the same spot. So what resources are we providing? And how does that look so that people have the opportunity to, um, to, to get the job that they want, to go to the school they want, to find the home they want, and, um, have those resources and tools available?
See, you, I'm telling you, you inspire me. You are, you are everything. Uh, so, uh, we gotta, we gotta sign off soon. I'mma put this bug on you real quick, though. Go ahead and win this next election. And, and, and then, uh, in a couple of years down the road, I'd love to see you run for the state house. I think you're, I'm, I'm, I'm saying it first, I'm saying, listen, I, I, I think you add a dimension to politics that, that a lot of folks missed. A lot of people run for office because they look good on a poster. You run for office because you wanna serve the people, and I appreciate that. All right, tell the people where they can find you and what events you have coming up.
All right, yeah. So, um, you can find me at graceforcolumbus.org or com, just search for Grace for Columbus.
There you go.
Um, I'm obviously on Facebook, Grace for, um, well, just Grace City Councillor at large, Grace Kessler. Um, you can find me there, and my email and my outreach is all there. I'm also on Instagram, you can find me at Grace Kessler there. Um, events coming up, uh, well, Bartholomew County Fair's coming up, we'll be there next week.
Okay.
Come visit the Big Ten.
And see, I'll be up in Fort Wayne next week.
Awesome, well.
Guess what I'm going up to? Guess what I'm going up to? It's, it's a clerk, it's the AIM conference.
Oh, yes, I saw that advertised.
Yeah, Nicole, Nicole is on the board of AIM, so I get to hang out with her with all the cool clerks, so.
Well, that sounds like a fun job. I, well, I hope our clerks are.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And so, I, I wanna thank you so much, Grace, uh, Councillor Grace, for, for coming and hanging out. Uh, this was two, you know, two weeks in a row I get to talk to you, so I'm always excited about that. You inspire people and continue to inspire people. Uh, I love your energy and your passion for your community. And guys, I'm telling you, y'all should be clicking on her donate link right now and giving her five, ten, fifteen dollars. Everything helps her as she runs this reelection. We wanna get, get her reelected, and we wanna hang on to this particular, uh, uh, council. We can keep Columbus, it says a lot about what's happening, not only in, uh, in, in southern Indiana, but particularly in the sixth and the ninth districts. So guys, continue to support those folks in Columbus. They're doing great, great work down there. Um, and as always, Indiana Zone is trying to elect these candidates, so I will be bringing you more candidates as we go along. I ain't gonna lie to y'all. So I had, I took a couple weeks, and I hung out in Florida where the heat and the sun and the ocean and the pool. No, Ron DeSantis can never make me not want to go put my feet in the saltwater. So, you know, he didn't, he didn't make Florida. He didn't make Florida, so he, whatever. Any, anyway. And I'm just now getting back into the rhythm of things. I'm starting to get things done. So trust me, I'll start advertising a little bit more. But please know, if you miss the show, you can always catch it on YouTube and anywhere that you listen to your podcasts, all right? Uh, Grace, thank you so much for joining me. I'm Indiana Zone Dana Black, and I will catch y'all next time. Peace.